Evening, everyone. Welcome. I call the City Council Meeting Committee of the Whole to order for Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. This time we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is you want to think about. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderwoman Lynch in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for tonight.
Arden, Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Reinert.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
T. Dunn.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Burkholder.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening again. Welcome as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, if you'd be kind enough to please put your phone on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any of the particular agenda items, please come to the podium. Once you're called by the chair, the microphone's above you. Love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Please be respectful of us. We'll be respectful of you. No cheering, clapping, or yelling. Please don't disturb the meeting. We want to hear from everybody. Thank you. Ms. Merritt, any updates tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. We have seven public hearings, four under community development and three under Public Works. We'll start with community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. We do have four public hearings in community development this evening. I'll start by opening the public hearing for case ORD 24-01, Ordinance Amending Chapter 17 in the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled "Zoning by Amending Table 17.08-1: Use Matrix to Allow Bed and Breakfast and Reception Facility as a Special Use in the CT Commercial Transitional Zoning District." Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. I open the public hearing for case ROW 24-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to vacate a portion of unimproved Marquette Street right-of-way located south of West 76th Street. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, and I live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. I don't read the green sheets like I once did, and I'm not a computer person, so I'm not online. So, I don't really know what this is for. It intends to vacate a portion of the unimproved Marquette Street right-of-way located south of West 76th Street, and I'm not sure whether that's for some industrial usage or for some other personal benefit. But as I have said before, it's time for the city of Davenport to stop expanding northward and to start preserving some monarch butterfly habitat. Sad news, New York Times. The monarch population in Mexico is at its second lowest level in history, and Davenport contributes to that by destroying monarch habitat by promoting northward expansion. And so, I'm not going to waste any more time. I'm just going to say that I think I'm opposed to this, but the sheet, and I would say as a friendly reminder, or friendly request, and I'm not mentioning any names, and you're all a lot of new people. I know years ago, not all of the alderpersons read all of the green sheets from cover to cover, and let me tell you, I did for years, and it was painful to watch. If they could put a little bit more information in the sheets that the public sees when they come down here and that the alderpersons, like I said, I'm sure that you as a member of the committee have read this from cover to cover, this particular item, but people on other committees might have had a lot of time spent on other things, and they might not have read it from cover to cover, and they might not know what the end-purpose usage of this vacation is. And so, if there was possible for city staff, not just for my benefit, but for the benefit of the other alderpeople who are not on your committee, if they could put a little bit more information in some of these, that would be helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. I open the public hearing for case REZ 24-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to rezone approximately 31.9 acres of land at 2800 Eastern Avenue from SIC Industrial Campus District to CT Commercial Transitional District and establish a planned unit development in accordance with the submitted preliminary plan. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this public hearing?
Gary Eklund, I still live in Alderman Kelly's Ward, and I will be real fast on this. I believe this is partly an Annie Wittenmeyer, and I'm not sure what the commercial transitional district is versus the planned unit development, which I think is the Annie Wittenmeyer. I'm not necessarily objecting to some commercial this or that. I am wanting to say with Annie Wittenmeyer that I believe that if city staff had planned ahead and had negotiated harder, the residential usage of Annie Wittenmeyer could have accommodated leaving the theater and at least two or three or four cottages in the hands of the junior theater without forcing the relocation. And I know the gentleman who's doing Annie Wittenmeyer said that they had calculated out the costs and the revenues and the benefits and the income based on having all of the rental units available. But I want to say that if the Davenport city staff had been, and the city council to be fair, had been a little bit harder negotiators, they could have preserved the junior theater in the hands of the junior theater and removed two cottages. I mean, I don't know whether he's going to have 26 or 28 rental units, but I believe they probably could have made the economics work and left the junior theater in place. And I don't know whether that's too late to do, but I know there's talk about building something new or finding a new location for junior theater, and there's no reason why they couldn't have just carved out, said, "Okay, you're going to do your residential, but we'll keep the junior theater where it's at. We'll give them two cottages, and you figure out how to make an income on the rest." That's all.
Thank you. Step to the lectern. State your name and address or ward, please.
Deborah Williams. I'm the president of Oakdale, so I don't know if you want that address or my personal address.
Your personal.
My personal is 2326 North Howell Street in Davenport. So, my question is, I've not seen any drawings or anything. I just got this in the mail, and my employee forwarded it to me. I just don't want, I know we have the bad kids over there. I don't know if they're still there or not, but we've had more trouble with vandalism from children, and I thought I had heard that this was going to be for senior housing. So, I guess I'm in the dark. So, can you fill me in someone, please?
So, this is a public hearing? So, during the public hearing, the city council just listens and we don't discuss. It'll come back on the agenda later on, and we'll have a discussion, but also, if you stick around after the meeting, I'd be happy to show you all of the documents within the case, and you can kind of see.
I appreciate that. Thank you kindly.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The public hearing has been closed, and our final public hearing is on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located at 1413 West 13th Street to Kyle and Samantha Beals. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern. State your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, still live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. I wasn't going to speak to this. I have no idea what the benefit is or who's benefiting from this, and I'm not speaking against it, but I want to point out the irony that the city of Davenport sometimes conveys property to people who look to make a renovation and some profit or whatever, and that may be what this one is. But there's an irony that as that woman who came down here crying not so long ago, talking about the city staff bullying her as her father was dying, possibly she was doing legal stuff.
Sir.
What, no, I'm going to say is, there's an irony that the city sometimes gives away property to people so that they can fix it up and make a profit, and yet it has no housing or assistance programs for low-income home buyers, and not only that, it has an expressed hatred for poor people who live in the city.
Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert. Next area, public hearings is under Public Works. Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Kelly, please.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to open the public hearing, the first one, the planned specifications form of contracts and estimates the cost of the FY 2020 state patching program, CIP 35045, all wards. Anyone from the public? First time on the mic. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any opposed? I make, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to open public hearing number two, the planned specification forms of contracts and estimate cost of the Lorton Place Intersection Reconstruction Program, CIP 35062. Anyone from the public? Y'all making this easy for me. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I would like to motion to put this item on discussion.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Do I still vote for that?
They can. This is a public hearing. You're fine. You were doing well.
Okay.
So, a second injure.
Okay.
And so, you asked for.
Okay. Like to make a motion for a vote. What, what, what? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, ayes have it. And I'd like to close that public hearing. Third public hearing, hearing plans, specifications form to contract the estimate cost of the Forest Road, East Kimberly Road to East 39th Street reconstruction program. Anybody from the public? I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Then the vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to close that third public hearing. Back to you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Next area is petitions and communications. Anyone? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Merritt. Just quickly, next Tuesday, February 27, 6:30 PM, Duck Creek Park Lodge, we'll have the next six ward meeting. Hope to see a lot of people there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Burkholder.
Thank you. Monday, February 26, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Putnam, we're going to have a fourth ward meeting. Hope everybody can come. Second thing that I have, I just noticed, public comment is not on the agenda. Is, did we vote on that?
No. I made the decision. We brief this, and there's no public comment on Committee of the Whole. Just the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to point out to the public an event that's going on this weekend. If you'll remember, the two weeks of winter we had this year wiped out our ice extravaganza downtown. So, the downtown partnership did a pivot, and they are doing a hot cocoa sip-in-shop crawl this weekend on Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 PM downtown, free hot chocolate, and a lot of our downtown realtors, The Last Picture House, Abernathy's, Allied Barber, Hairbrush Sunless, Cabort, Chocolate Manor, Daiquiri Factory, Dudad's, German American Heritage Center, Mississippi River Distillery. So, the list actually goes on. There's more than they said. So, if you're out and about on Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00, you can stop into any of those places, support our local retail, and enjoy some free hot chocolate. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just another reminder, the third ward meeting will be on Monday, the 26th, at 6:30 here at City Hall. Our guest will be our new Alderman-at-Large, Jasmine Newton. I hope you can join us. Again, that's Monday night at 6:30 right here in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Also, the fifth ward meeting will be this, the 29th of February at Third Missionary Baptist Church. It'll be 222 West 14th Street at 5:30. Anyone's welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else?
Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion. First one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
We do have seven items on our agenda this evening. We'll start with item number one, which is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-06, being the request of Larry Edwards-Stoltenberger Trust to rezone approximately 25.84 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Sloper Town Road and Hillendale Road from SAG Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern. State your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
Yeah, I'm Gary Eklund, and I am 100% opposed to this. The city of Davenport, as we talked about previously, when, in my opinion, it was a much nicer, much more environmentally friendly, much more equitable, and much less expensive city to run, the majority of 100,000 people lived south of Kimberly Road, and yet sometime along the line, 1980, whenever, sometime, there was a decision made to spend gazillions and gazillions of city tax dollars to sprawl out and to build more roads and to build more sewers and to hire more city staff to drive more snowplows and more rock salt and higher sewer bills and garbage fees to finance all of this. And as I mentioned a minute ago, in the news, just within the last week or so, the monarch population is at its lowest level ever. I think it's 59 or 69% below last year. And I know the city sent staff to destroy my milkweed and flowers, so the city's contributing to the destruction of the monarchs very badly. And this-
Let's get back on topic, please.
This project, every time that we sprawl further north, that's more money for snowplows, more money for road crews, more money for sewers, higher sewer bills. This is a bad thing for the city to continue doing. If the city could have 100,000 people on this side of Kimberly, how is it that we need this much room for 100,000 people with the destruction of blocks and blocks of houses and the building of new taxpayer-subsidized houses north of everything? This is just a bad idea. It's time to stop. It's time to stop sprawling onto agricultural land and green space and time to start living within the city limits that we've already set.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is there any comment from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance for case ORD 24-01, amending Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled "Zoning by Amending the Table 17.08-1: The Use Matrix to Allow Bed and Breakfast and Reception Facility as a Special Use in the CT Commercial Transitional Zoning District." Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing none, the only thing I would add to this is that, being that the bed and breakfast and reception facility would become a special use in the matrix, that means that we would still have a little bit of control within that zoning district, so they would have to go to the zoning board of adjustments to get approval for that special use. All right. Seeing no one else, we will move on to item number three, which is a first consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to vacate a portion of unimproved Marquette Street right-of-way located south of West 76th Street. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 24-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to rezone approximately 31.9 acres of land at 2800 Eastern Avenue from SIC Institutional Campus District to CT Commercial Transitional District and establish a planned unit development in accordance with the submitted preliminary plan. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Are there any comments from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving case F-23-13, being the request of Calvin Bolkema for a final plat of West Silver Creek Second Edition, a two-lot subdivision on 4.25 acres located at 5605 Wisconsin Avenue. Is there anyone from the public? State your name and address or ward.
Gary Eklund, I still live in the city. I'm going to very carefully say that I'm not coming up here to oppose this. I, this is the sort of thing that we really should have enough of, which is northern sprawl, and that means all of the money spent to maintain sewers and roads north, which we didn't use to have a garbage and sewer bill that was only done to fund northward expansion of the city. Otherwise, that wouldn't exist, and affordability, housing affordability would be much higher. This mentions a two-lot subdivision on 4.25 acres on 5605 Wisconsin Avenue. So, if that's maybe about two acres per house, I'm sure those are going to be lovely places to live if you can afford it. And we already have the roads out there. I know in the old days, I'm not sure, you know, like the city would plow residential streets first, next to schools and hospitals first, and then move out. And the further you got out in the country, the harder it is, or the less often the plows came. So, we probably already plow out there, so I'm not sure how much difference it would make whether or not this is approved or not, and I'm sure it's going to be lovely housing for whoever is able to afford it. But in general, we need to stop the northward expansion, and we need to build affordable housing for people who can't afford to buy a new home on two acres.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property located at 1413 West 13th Street to Kyle and Samantha Beals. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Is Mr. Berger here tonight? If you could come up and talk to us about this and what this project is, it's something to certainly celebrate.
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. This is the latest urban homestead completed project, so this is a resolution to convey to the homeowners who made it through the federal process, so they'll become the new homeowners. And the property was originally, I believe, abandoned vacant anyway and needed a lot of work, and so we're bringing that homeownership back and revitalizing that particular block and eventually getting that property back on the tax rolls. So, yeah.
So, this is, this is in fourth ward, I believe. It is south of Locust, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And it is affordable housing. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Yeah. To qualify for the program, you need to be at or below 80% of median family income for your family size. Yeah.
Thank you. So, I just want to say, this is a great program. It is a challenging program. I think it's something that we all look forward to every year. It is a way to indeed start to revitalize areas that have been left derelict in some cases for various reasons over the years, to take a building that probably for the neighbors was something that was not something they wanted to look at anymore, and to rehabilitate it in a very safe manner, which this program requires, and then have new homeowners moving in who will be paying taxes on this property, which I'm guessing probably didn't have a lot paid for a while, is a great thing. So, and it is adding to our stock of affordable housing and now moves to the private sector and private owners, and I'm delighted. So, thank you for all the work that your department has to do to make this happen, and congratulations to the new homeowner. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, I would ask Alderman Reinert to please set our agenda. Oops, sorry. Got one more. I got number seven. Thank you. Item number seven is a resolution approving the 2024 Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption projects. Is there anyone from the public here to comment? State your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
Gary Eklund. And again, I'm not an online person, and I have not read the description of this outside of what it says here, and it just says, "Resolution approving the 2024 Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption Projects." And I know there is tax exemption projects. There's a way that the city gives money to people, allows them not to pay property taxes on things. And as I understand it, poor people are left out of everything. And because this involves taxes, I want to mention that a couple of weeks ago, Alderman Kelly mentioned that someone in his ward had asked him about property taxes in the city of Davenport, and Alderman Kelly was told by someone that there is a Scott County assessor, but there's not really a Davenport assessor. And I was disappointed that staff did not get up immediately after that and come to the mic to explain how property taxes are assessed in the city of Davenport, and that Davenport does have a property tax assessor. And as someone who agreed to purchase a house in 2014 for 20-some thousand dollars, the first year, they did not mail me anything on my tax bills. The next year, I found out they wanted me to pay on a home that was over twice as much as I was paying for my home. I had someone from the city come out to talk about the taxation, and he explained to me that the city automatically assumes that any poor person who buys a home has got an unfair deal. And if I can explain this in a way that makes sense-
Can you tie it back to the Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption Program?
Yeah, it's tax exemption, and it's taxes, and it's who gets it, and how fair is the property tax. So, if you give me a minute, I'll be faster. It'd be faster to let me say this. If 98 people who had city government jobs or school district jobs, and they all made $100,000 each, and they all bought $100,000 houses, and 98 people bought those houses, they'd be appraised at or assessed at $100,000. But then, if a black dishwasher from downtown or-
Point of order. Point of order.
Let's tie it back to-
If somebody buys a $20,000 house, they automatically say it's worth $100,000. So, I want to say, city staff, I think, have an obligation to make it clear to city council people how the property taxes are appraised, and Davenport does have a Davenport property tax assessor. The property taxes are, there's a Scott County assessor, and there's a Davenport assessor. And if the alderpeople are going to provide, alderpeople, aldermen, alderwomen, are going to provide proper oversight to the city of Davenport staff, which is in desperate need of proper oversight, city staff should explain how the system works. And so, I just want to say that I think that all of the city's tax programs, all of the city's programs are designed to reward higher-income people, and I know, I know I didn't get any property tax credit. Not only that, I was denied the opportunity to appeal my tax decision this year because they sent me a notice of my appeal date after the date had already passed. That's how the city operates for poor people.
Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council with comments. We'll start with Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you. Mr. Berger, could you please give us a little more information on what the URTE program actually is? I think it's a pretty, pretty well-zoned program, right? If you could kind of explain how that works in different areas and what districts are affected by that program.
Sure, sure. Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. The URTE stands for Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption. So, it is based on folks who would do, and businesses as well, it's not just housing, that would do projects to improve the property such that their tax value goes up. And then, the exemption part comes in. This is a state program that they allow communities around the state to sign up for, allows us to designate certain geographic areas, and then you can allow an exemption of that increase of their property taxes and their different schedules. So, it's an incentive to encourage revitalization, often in areas that maybe are lacking some investments.
Thank you. And if I understand correctly, the majority of the homes that are south of Locust are, they would qualify for a 10-year property tax exemption, correct?
Correct.
Meaning that essentially, if they were able to invest $15,000 in remodel work to improve the value of their home, then the city would give them a 10-year cushion of not having to pay property taxes on that $15,000?
Correct. Exactly.
So, to give them some time to earn their funds back, hopefully.
Exactly. Yep. That's exactly how it works.
Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to mention also that I'm happy to see this building, um, an apartment building there on Harrison, um, will be eligible for this. Ecumenical Housing is doing a tremendous amount of rehab of affordable housing, um, that is also included in this, and so, um, and some of these, uh, not-for-profit entities do pay taxes. They are not exempt of taxes necessarily on housing because they receive income from them. So it is good to see, um, this moving forward. Ecumenical Housing has a tremendous number that they especially, especially will be working on. And so, um, as, um, Alderman Lynch pointed out, um, this is, um, these are areas that are, uh, that have typically had, um, uh, loss of housing or have had, um, uh, poor housing. And so these are not, um, be, uh, stunning, uh, you know, five hundred thousand dollar homes. They are houses that are sometimes sitting vacant, they are, uh, uh, they are, um, older buildings that have not had use. And also, again, as I'm saying here, um, there's affordable housing within this as well. So exciting to see this, um, every year. And I also wanted to say there are, I have some, um, I will be abstaining from some of these, and I will give you that list, okay? Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? So I, I would just kind of add, uh, one more thing before I pass it over to Alderman Reinerts is that, you know, all of the projects for, uh, URTE are listed in the packet. The vast majority of our projects are residential, and the majority of those residential projects are occurring south of Locust Street. And so we've, we've set up the incentive areas to be stronger for different types of development, multifamily, single-family, residential, um, but we also get commercial and industrial, and this is a pretty powerful development and redevelopment tool that we have, um, in Davenport. So Alderman Reinerts, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you. I make a motion to place items one through seven on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda is set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Reinerts. Next to you is Public Safety, Alderman Jobson and Alderman T. Dunwo. Discuss, Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the Public Safety Agenda is a resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closure requests for the listed dates and times. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Quad City Symphony Orchestra Symphony Day, River Center slash Adler Theater, one thirty-six East Third Street, eight AM to two-thirty PM, Thursday, February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, closure, northernmost parking lane and two travel lanes on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street. Next, Max Tavern, Daquery Factory Carriage House and Kill Kenny St. Patrick's Day Celebration Downtown, approximately two PM, Saturday, March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four to six AM, Sunday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, closure, West Third Street from Ripley Street to Harrison Street. Next, Davenport Community School District Intermediate and High School Track Meets, Brady Street Stadium, thirty-six oh three Brady Street, three-thirty PM to nine-thirty PM, various dates in April twenty-twenty-four with, uh, schedule attached online. Closure, Thirty-Sixth Street from Brady Street to west of Davenport Avenue. Next, Corn Belt Running Club, BICs at six, training runs, five PM to eight PM, Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Thursday, June twentieth, twenty-two, twenty-four, Thursday, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and Thursday, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Closures, East Fourth Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive, Pershing Avenue from East Fourth Street to Kirkwood Boulevard, Kirkwood Boulevard from Pershing Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from Kirkwood Boulevard to Middle Road, Middle Road from Jersey Ridge Road to McCollum Boulevard, and McCollum Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive. And then last, Daquery Factory Summer Street Games, three oh three West Third Street, nine AM Friday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, to seven PM Saturday, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four, closure, West Third Street from Ripley Street to Harrison Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Step to the podium, um, name, order, address, and then please just which item you're addressing.
The, uh, Summer Street Games, Colin Cartee, forty-eight thirty-three West Locust. Um, and I just want to talk about kind of what we do and why we have to close it down for as long as we do. The big thing is that we're bringing in a rig, and we can't move it and shift it as much as we'd like to, so we have to close down a little bit more of the, of the street than we want to. However, it brings in big competition, it brings in people from all over the place. We had teams from, uh, Washington DC, teams from Oklahoma City, we had teams from Chicago, so it really does bring out people to the Quad Cities that normally wouldn't be here. And then on top of that, when you bring them in, they bring in hotels and all that stuff, and it brings in people during times at the bars, and other things are usually pretty dead down there, or at least not as busy. So that way, when we have that, we can come in and bring in more people, and it really does bring in a good vibe to downtown, if you go down and see it. And it, we, we put in a lot of money from OC three just to have it outside, so the rig can be outside, the floor can be outside and all that. It made it very important for us to bring everything here, I've born and raised here, everything I've done has been in this city, so bringing it outside was something big. Last year, we already did, and it was so successful, it sold out in less than fifteen minutes, and then we want to bring it back. The big thing is, I know it's a little bit inconvenient with the way we have to set it up, but I promise you, we get in, we get out as quickly as we can, we leave no footprint. Um, we get all the other bars to be able to want to be there and want to help us out. So it's something that we've done, and we've done for the last few years, and then moving it downtown was something that was just a cool environment. We've, you know, brought in, uh, photographers and, and videographers to highlight the city and the things they do. And, you know, our, my family's been here forever, we never want to leave this place, we like it, and that's why we like, feel like we need to bring in new things, and new things are what's going to help the city grow. So that's really what it's about, and just want to shed a little more, more light than it's just shutting down and bringing a bunch of fit people out there running around. It's definitely more important than that to us. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else from public wishing to comment? Please step to the podium, name, order, address, and then, again, please, the item about what you're wanting to discuss.
Kyle Peters, three oh three West Third Street. Um, I'm the property owner of three oh three West Third Street, I'm also the business owner and the operator of the Daquery Factory. Um, we've been around for twenty years. We decided to build our second location in downtown Davenport. We believe in the city, that's why we chose that. We had the opportunity to move to a lot of different spaces, chose down here because I'm familiar with a few of the, the people from DAP, uh, DDP. I like the, the vision, I think the growth is here, um, and that's why we chose to make a significant investment in the downtown. With that, our business plan and part of our model is bringing in special events and stuff to drive critical mass to the area, um, especially during times that aren't programmed. We all know, like, on Third Street, it's pretty busy from the, from the nighttime on, seven PM till after midnight, um, Fridays and Saturdays. So it's a, a unique event, like the Summer Street Games, drive traffic down there at a time that's usually not a lot of things going on. We decided, I've been friends with the Carte's for over ten years, um, we decided that it was a great partnership to partner with another Davenport business that's just north of, of downtown. And, uh, so we'd like to see the support from the community. Like Colin said, we have people that come in from all over the country that come in and support the event. People stay, they do the hotels, um, and, uh, I think that's really about it. It's just, it's a great event, the neighbors are supportive of it, it is, it's, it's free, there's no admission for anybody to actually come and participate, watch, the sidewalks are open, it's a great flow for downtown. Colin said it's a good vibe. And, uh, it's neat to watch people just go in and out and stuff like, of the other businesses. So it definitely has an economic, uh, impact for downtown, and it brings people there during a time that we usually don't have a lot of activity going on. So I appreciate the support for this event for our second year. We did do it last year, it was great, I didn't hear any negative feedback from anybody, um, whether it was Facebook, email, telephone. So, um, like to continue the support from the council, and hopefully we can do it again for twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public wishing to come on these items? Please step the name, or step to the podium, name, order, address.
Hello, I'm Kathy Cartee. As you might guess, I'm Colin's mom, first and foremost. Second of all, I represent OC three, not because I'm the best lawyer in town, Jasmine, but because I'm free. So what I want to say is, like the honor said, we're trying to make Davenport a better place. We brought in this CrossFit OC three event down to downtown Davenport when they could have put it anywhere. We brought in people from out of town, from Chicago, from Washington DC, from Kansas City, from St. Louis, they fly in, they support it, and they're downtown. And I know the event closes at eight, but they're downtown all night, enjoying all the bars and everything downtown has, they stay in the hotels downtown. It's not like they close at eight and everybody leaves, and I know that's a concern, and I know that's a concern that they're, they're shutting off Harrison Street and all four lanes. However, OC three had to hire engineers to construct the rigs in order to put them up outside. They put in twenty-plus thousand dollars just to have this outside in Davenport. Because like Colin told you, and many of you know, I grew up in Davenport. I went to Davenport schools, my kids went to Davenport schools, we didn't go to Bettendorf, we stayed here. I do a lot of events here in Davenport, I believe in Davenport, I believe in this community, and I could have left anytime I wanted, I chose not to. And I think this is really important. You guys started BICs with, what, a hundred people? And what is it now? Maybe give them a chance to have a second year down there. They can't move the rigs at eight o'clock at night, it's impossible because of the engineering of it all, so it's not possible to do that. Now maybe there's another way to work around, maybe another street or, but I know it's Harrison and Third, so I don't know how we would do that, but I, I know Colin and Kyle are open to maybe a discussion on how to maybe change the logistics of the streets. But I will tell you this, you have the support of many big companies here. Estes Construction sponsors them, Mississippi Valley Surgery Center sponsors them, Orthopedic Specialist sponsors them, Hometown Heating sponsors them, doctors sponsor them, chiropractors sponsor them. And these are people that believe in Davenport enough in this event to put a lot of money to support this event downtown, and I would hate to see, and I know, uh, Alderman McGinnis is concerned that they've turned down other people's licenses, however, Kyle, who I've known for fifteen years, pardon me, has brought his company here, spent a million dollars to put Daquery Factory downtown, and like he said, he could have gone anywhere and put that anywhere because he believed in you guys. He changed Kill Kenny's, not Kill Kenny's, what was it?
The bad word.
That's a bad word, the bad word. He changed that, and he put a respectable business down there, you don't have any problems down there, you have good people down there, you have young people down there supporting his business, supporting this community, and I would really hate to see you tell them no. If you tell them no, they're going to go someplace else, and I don't think that's what Davenport's about. You start small, you grow big, and you're going to allow them to grow bigger if you allow this to continue. They're willing to work with you to change how the logistics work on it, but they can't change the rigs, they already spent so much money to construct these rigs, and seven thousand dollars just for the flooring to have the event outside. They believed in this community, you should believe in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you so much, Alderman Jobson. Yes, I want to, I want to, uh, Kyle and I were, uh, Peters and I were able to speak today. Um, I did mention at, uh, City of the, at the, uh, management update meeting yesterday, I do have a concern, the only concern I have is that this is on a major thoroughfare. It is, um, it is closing down for two days. I was concerned last year, I did not know it was be coming back this year, and when I saw it on the agenda, I did reach out, um, I, to Kyle, he was out of town, we were able to talk today. And, um, so I, uh, my concern is that, um, I have, um, in the past, and I am not, you know, I am one person on this council, there are six, you know, six votes passes something, so I, and we had this conversation today. Um, and I certainly understand where, uh, the folks who were doing this are coming from, but I have a major concern about, I, I, we, we do events on the street downtown. They are large events, they involve lots of different people, usually it's BICs, it's, it's, um, it's, uh, St. Patrick's Day, uh, uh, the, the, um, Alternating Currents or events that people are participating across downtown, and I understand those, or if it's, um, an entire group of businesses, um, along one street, I understand that. I have a diff, I have a difficulty in, um, granting one when several years ago, um, we talked to, um, people on West Third Street in the West End and said, "You can't block this street anymore for an event, you need to take it somewhere else." We worked with them to take it somewhere else, um, and that was the conversation I was trying to, I wanted to have today, uh, with these folks. I, I do not, I, I don't know how the next time if I were to vote yes on this, that someone else would come with something else downtown, and how could I say no, um, to someone else wanting to close a block? I can't, so I can't pick and choose, and I don't think it would be fair for me to do that. I certainly appreciate everything that the Daquery Factory has done. I would be happy, um, to sit down and work with you on, um, alternatives, but I, I remain concerned about closing a major thoroughfare street. I don't think it's something we should be doing in downtown or, or anywhere along Third Street, quite frankly. There was one, uh, I looked back at what has been closed downtown for one business or one thing in my time on council, and it was a small event for half, for an afternoon, it was on Main Street between Third, between Second Street and River Drive, it was, uh, for the Community Foundation, and they put the, I think they put the bear, the barrels up at one o'clock, and they took them away at five o'clock. So it was a very small, um, half-day type thing. Uh, and I'm, so that's, um, so those are some of my concerns. Now, I certainly, um, as, uh, as I've talked to Mr. Peters today, I certainly respect where he is coming from, the people who spoke tonight are coming from, but that remains my concern. And again, I don't speak for anybody else on council, uh, but that's a position that I feel have to take. I have, again, turned this, said this is not a good use of the street, it's not, doesn't work as a thoroughfare, um, that's me. So, um, I don't, again, uh, I certainly respect Mr. Peters' position and what you're saying. It would be nice if we could look for a compromise, I certainly think this should be on discussion. I did offer for it to be tabled for a cycle so that it could come back and we could talk about it, and we can't talk back and forth here, that's not what we can do, but we can talk after, um, or we can set a meeting to talk about this, and I'm happy to do that. So that, I just wanted to get that on the table tonight for everybody, and thank you all for coming and speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Grip?
Uh, thank you, Chair. So I, I respect Alderwoman McGinnis' position, uh, for consistency in the way that she votes within her ward, um, and I want to say that very consistently, I try to prioritize people over cars, and I think we have an opportunity here for people to be out doing things in our downtown. I think that is important, that's what we want in our downtown, and so I typically, uh, favor things that get people out on our sidewalks, out on our streets, and, and people doing things in our downtown. So I, I am supportive of this, I'm definitely open to, let's have a conversation and see if we can do it, uh, differently that meets or, uh, takes care of some of the concerns that Alderwoman McGinnis has brought up, um, but even if we're unable to, I still think it's a good thing. And, and it's funny, because as I was thinking about this over the last twenty-four hours, uh, Ms. Cartee, I came up with the same thing. I think there were, there were seventy-something people who ran the first BICs, right? And, uh, you know, forty years later, uh, tens of thousands of people gather, so, uh, you never know what's going to become of, of an event like this, and I think there's opportunity for growth, but there's also opportunity maybe to do better. I'd be happy to be a part of those conversations, I am a little bit limited here in the next week of when I can meet those, so, um, feel free to meet without me and then, and then catch me up on it, but, um, I'm going to be supportive of this, and I hope that we can, uh, find a resolution to keep this event in downtown Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, sir. So I love to tell stories about my life, so when I had a healthier life, there was this guy that came into my life named Colin Cartee. So I just want to say thank you for when I was on the upswing, now I'm having health issues and I haven't been at OC three, so I, as well, will be supportive of your program because I know what it did for me and the life changes it did for me before I had severe health issues. So I would love to be at the conversation too, if you guys would have me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you, Alderman, uh, Jobson. I'm generally supportive of events that will bring the community together and bring, um, es- essentially money into Davenport, whether it's downtown Davenport or any part of the city. From what I hear, this is an event that has brought people from outside of our region, um, and they're, they're coming here, they're spending money, and that's always great. Certainly, I understand Alderwoman McGinnis has some concerns, and I, I do think that the appropriate thing would not be to vote this down or take it away, it would be to allow for discussion to take place, uh, so Alderwoman McGinnis can meet with, um, the, Mr. Peters and anybody else involved, so I do think that perhaps putting it on for discussion would be the appropriate step to allow for that to take place, um, and for more information to be gathered. But no, I do think it's important, and I, and I do agree, things start small, and they may turn into something large, and like, the BICs is a perfect example of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Alderman Reinerts?
Thank you. This is a question for staff. If we're going to shut down West Third Street, the alternate routes that folks will have to take, is this going to put an unnecessary traffic burden on alternate routes? Or is this something that can be accommodated fairly easily?
We'll look into that, and then we can provide that ahead of next week.
My feeling is I'd like to support this as well, as long as the alternate routes aren't going to be congested. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll make the recommendation that the Daiquiri Factory item is placed on discussion for next week. Closes item number one. Item number two, motion approving noise variance request on listed dates and times for outdoor events. Again, I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Kill Kenny's St. Patrick's Day Celebration, 300 West Third Street, 8:00 AM, Saturday, March 16, 2024 to 12:00 AM, Sunday, March 17, 2024, outdoor music over 50 dB. And then next, Daiquiri Factory Summer Street Games, 303 West Third Street, 4:00 PM, 8:30 PM, Friday, June 14, 2024, and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday, June 15, 2024, outdoor music slash DJ over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on either of these items?
Is that the same as?
Please step to the podium. Name, order, address again?
Same?
Yes, same, same event, the noise variance request associated with that same event.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe now I can take the time just to comment on Alderman McGinnis. I know that there are some, you have some, well, okay, I'll just talk in general. There is, there is some concern about the noise down there. But I would tell you again, I do believe that this event, with the noise being up and the DJ being there, brings in so many people outside of this community. And I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else from public wishing to comment on either of these items? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I'm sorry, our system is a little confusing. We can't talk back and forth. But I, just to let you know, the noise variance is something that comes with many events. I'm fine with that. It's the closure of the street that's the issue. But noise variances, we approve every week, and it's the way that we deal with that. And so people understand that they're allowed to have louder noise than normal, and that's fine. So thank you.
Seeing no one else, just a, just a quick comment. This is something that we will leave on discussion just because of it's associated with the street, street closure. I don't think that anybody has, again, speaking for myself, I have no issue with the noise variance request and, and that, but just the way in which that works. So again, we'll make a recommendation for that item to be placed on the discussion agenda for next week. That closes item number two. Item number three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, Carriage House, 312 West Third Street, extended outdoor area, March 16 through 17, license type, Class C liquor on premises. Next, Daiquiri Factory, 303 West Third Street, extended outdoor area, March 16, license type, Class C liquor on premises. Next, Kill Kenny's Pub in Eatery, 300 West Third Street, extended outdoor area, March 15 through 18, license type, Class C liquor on premises. Next, Max Tavern, 316 West Third Street, extended outdoor area, March 16 through 17, license type, Class C liquor on premises. Next, Office 116 West Third Street, extended outdoor area, March 16 through 17, license type, Class C liquor on premises. Next, Rodriguez Hope, 226 West Third Street, extended outdoor area, March 14 through 18, license type, Class C liquor on premises. And last, Hilltop Campus Village, 1527 Brady Street, temporary event, March 8, license type, Class C liquor on premises. And then we also have those items listed under section B, annual license renewals, which I will not read, but are there for review. Therefore, I'd ask, is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? That would close item number three, and I would ask Alderman Dunn to please set our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to place all items on public safety to the consent agenda, excluding item one pertaining to Daiquiri, Daiquiri Factory, Summer Street Games, 303 West Third Street, and also items two for the Daiquiri Factory, Summer Street Games, 303 West Third Street. Further discussion in the agenda, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobden and Alderman, Tim Dunn. Next, there is Public Works. Alderman Kelly would discuss. Alderman Kelly, please.
Thank you, sir. I, the first item, I have second consideration for ordinance amending chapter 15.44 initial entitled flood damage prevention to the Davenport Municipal Code to adopt a new flood insurance study and flood maps and align the ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA standards and regulations. Anyone from the public? That item will move on. Second one, I have resolution accepting work completed under 2023 Sidewalk Repair Program by Collins Concrete LTD of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $130,563.76, CIP 28028. Anyone from public? Counsel? That item will move on. Third, resolution accepting work completed under the Third and Brady Street Skate Project by Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $469,420.25, CIP 60035. Anyone from the public? State your name and where you're from.
Here, Eklund and I live in Davenport. I'm looking at this and it's almost $500,000. And I don't know if it's already spent and it's got to be paid. I'm not sure. I'm also curious looking at this. I have questions that have come to light again recently about how much money the city gives to the Downtown Davenport Association or whatever name it goes by, which is really the Chamber of Commerce. It's all one institution. And it's tax money going to the Chamber of Commerce. And it seems to me like this potentially would be a bill that could come out of the Downtown Davenport Association's taxpayer gift rather than out of the general budget. But I would be curious if someone could explain in a future meeting how much money the Downtown Davenport Association gets. It's my understanding that the Downtown Davenport Association gets money from the city, tax money collected by the city from the city's taxpayers to benefit the downtown, and that this is a downtown expense. So I don't see why it couldn't come out of the tax money that we're giving away to this organization. And while talking about the Davenport Downtown Association, I tried to look up their, if they're, if they're really a not-for-profit, which they're supposed to be, they're supposed to file an IRS Form 990 that you can look up to see how they're spending the money. So, one, this seems like an excessive amount of money for streets, streetscaping, that you could buy and give away nine $50,000 houses for that amount of money. But I, I will finish up. This just seems to be like an excessive waste of money and that we're giving the Downtown Davenport Association money to do this already. And so why aren't they spending this money than the, than the general fund?
Anyone else from public? Counsel? Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you very much. Could, who would be the best staff person to explain the Schmidt and the fact that the downtown partnership, that these people pay extra taxes for this, if you could, please?
Oh, so I'll let someone, I'll, I'll answer about the project.
Sure.
And then someone else can ask about the overall taxing structure for the Schmidt.
Right.
So for the project that's in front of you right now, it's actually a cost share program. So the city has portions of the project that we pay for. We work with DDP. They have a cost share associated with this. And then the property owners also have a portion that is assessed to them over time. So it's paid for both with city capital funds. Downtown Partnership has a significant investment in, in this amount, as well as the individual property owners who are receiving an improvement.
Okay, thank you. And could someone explain the Schmidt? Thank you, Mr. Berger. And the Schmidt concept, because we have more than one?
Bruce Burger, Community Economic Development.
In this tutorial, you will learn.
Smids are, excuse me, Smids are self-supporting municipal improvement districts, and they're authorized under state law. And you need to meet certain requirements, commercial and historic and those sorts of things. What they allow property owners to do is petition to set them up and tax themselves. And then those tax, extra tax revenue, however much you determine you want to tax yourself within that district, then can be spent on improving things and doing lots of things, actually. You can buy property and rehab. So that's what the downtown has done. We actually have the East Village, the Hilltop Campus Village area. There are some actual business districts also in some other parts, but the three main ones are those, those districts that then have dollars to be able to improve their, their, their districts.
Thank you. This is, the Schmidt is a great, it's a, it's a great opportunity for mostly commercial areas, but there are also historic districts that could be Schmidts, actually. But we don't have any of those. They, it's a great way for them to, they tax themselves at a higher level than you or I would tax ourselves if we had a business, you know, just had a business, not an Schmidt. And that's where you see money going. We have three. The downtown, of course, is the largest because it's the largest number of commercial properties there. Then there is, there is the village, as, as, as Mr. Berger mentioned. And then there is the Hilltop Business Association, which is actually the Schmidt and the Hilltop Campus Village area. I would encourage other neighborhoods, if they're thinking about how do we, you know, how do we fund ourselves, how do we do improvements in, in our commercial areas, to think about this. I certainly wish there were more in Davenport because it obviously is helpful to these groups. So, but it is something that is allowed through the state. Thank you.
Okay. The fourth resolution awarding a contract of Lorden Avenue Overlay and Drainage Improvement Project to Manettes, Inc. of Command, Iowa, in the amount of $635,684, CIP 35062. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? Jasmine, I mean, Alderman Newton, sorry.
No worries. Thank you, Alderman Kelly. I did have questions regarding this. I had constituent reach out and ask questions essentially regarding alleged OSHA, alleged OSHA and/or responsible bidder concerns. I know staff would probably need time to do some research on the matter. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. We can look into those concerns through the purchasing division and then provide an update ahead of next week.
Perfect. So I would be asking that this matter be placed on the discussion agenda to allow time for that. Please.
Thank you. Alderman Jobden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a ward Alderman in this area, I would request to be part of any of those conversations as well. This is an area between 53rd Street and 46th Street that's kind of an old, kind of country, country road that, you know, when you want to talk about road conditions, you know, hey, as a physical therapist that likes to treat people with neck and back pain, drive this road a couple of times and then I'll give you my business card and we'll see what we can do there. So it's long overdue. Definitely something that the residents in the area have been clamoring for. My only issue with this, and I've spoken with staff on it, is I hope we can still be forward-thinking with traffic calming because I know that the residents in the area are going to say, hey, that's great, but now we got people flying through here. That's a, that's a cutoff. So I guess, again, just I would request to be part of any of those conversations. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. Because we've had concerns with this organization in the past, and we have taken some issues with, and consequences to them, I'd like a more detailed how they've done over time because we all know the concern with this, this organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the fifth resolution awarding the contract of 2024 pedestrian. I'm sorry, Alderman Newton?
Thank you. Just briefly, can I just ask that the staff provide that information to the entire council? Please. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, moving on. Fifth resolution awarding contract to the 2024 pedestrian curb ramp re-trophy program of Amcor LLC of Bluegrass, Iowa, the amount of $229,088, CIP 35063. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Okay, moving on to resolution approving the plan specification of forms of the contract and estimate of cost of the FY 2025 state patching program, CIP 35045. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Moving on, resolution approving the plan specification forms of contracts and estimate cost of the Lorden Place Intersection Reconstruction Project, CIP 35062. Anyone from public? Counsel? Okay, moving on, resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimate of cost of the Forest Road, East Kimberly Road to 39th Street Reconstruction Project, CIP 35062. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Moving on, resolution amending the resolution of the necessity covering the 2024 alley resurfacing program. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Moving on, resolution overruling objects of the resolution of necessity covering the 2024 alley resurfacing program for... Something. Okay. Public? Anyone from public? Sorry. Anyone from council? Oh, state, you're, state your name and where you're from.
Dear Cornet, Southern Ward, I was just wondering about this, what are the objections that we're overruling? That could be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else from public? Counsel? Alderman Jobden?
I can ask you to please step up and maybe answer this gentleman's questions. And I had some of the similar questions yesterday at management update. Thank you.
Brian Shad, Public Works. There are actually two points in this program where objections are heard. The initial one is where the, the program was changed here a couple of years ago. Where in order to not move forward as an alley in the program, over 51% need to object. We passed through that first section, less than 51%. The second section, there is written correspondence sent out to the alleys that moved forward through the program. They are given a chance to either write to us or come to the public hearing, and no objections were heard.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Thank you. The 11th resolution adopting the revolution necessity covering the 2024 alley resurfacing program. Anyone from public? Anyone from council? The next resolution ordering preparation of detailed plan specification, notice of hearing, notice of binding, there's from the contract and publication of the notice of binders and notice of hearing covering the 2024 alley resurfacing program. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Resolution of authorizing approving the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary of easements association with the West Loop Trail Phase One Project, Wisconsin Avenue to existing trail to Emies Park, CIP 28029. Anyone from the public? Come forward. State your name and where you're from, please.
David Anderson, Ward Five, and quite proud of it. I would like to condemn this commencement proceeding of condemnation. I am personally and professionally knowledgeable about this area and would ask that you ask for the monetary amounts, the locations of needed areas, map of the locations. We, sorry, West and East Locust Street is marked for bicycles at this area. I was just up there this afternoon. Most, many of the bicyclists, which are usually in very professional rider gear, so these are extreme bicyclists and very impressive, I must say. What they do is they cross Locust Street, just a small jog down from Emies Park Lane and go to the Eagles Crest Road. And they go south, when they get to the end of that, they go south or west into a dead end area that is not marked. that, they go south or west into a dead end area that is not marked. I see a lot of confusion with people driving around there. It is a wonderful neighborhood, though. It's absolutely fantastic. It has no outlet signs, but that's another story. Also, the Emice Park Drive is desperately in need of some shoulder work by the tennis areas. I'm not sure whether bicycles go over there. I'm not as knowledgeable about that, but I'm, I just love these bicyclists. They're always happy, fun people. They're in good shape and having a good time, and I just hope to find out the expense for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone from council? Next motion accepting the work completed under the CY 2023 Contract Milling Program by Manette's Inc., Eastern Iowa, Division of Commandes, Iowa, in the amount of... 88 million. Wait a minute. See, that's why I'm laughing, because numbers. 88,470,000, I mean... Thank you. CIP 35041. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? In the last resolution, motion approving a waiver of sidewalk installation of either side of the newly constructed American Water Way from the south end of Lot One, Iowa, American Water Company, first addition to the north end of Lot One, Iowa, American Water. First addition, and that said, waiver is valid as long as a certain conditions remain in effect. Anyone from public? Anyone from council? Well, I thank you. I would ask Alderman Lynch if she would set the agenda for me, please. With number...
Thank you. I make a motion to place items one through 15 on the consent agenda, with the exception of placing item number four on discussion. Anybody opposed, or all in favor, say aye? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Sarah.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly and Alderwoman Lynch. The next area and last is Finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Alderwoman Lynch and I have four items on the finance agenda. The first item, resolution setting a public hearing for the FY 2025 proposed property tax levy rate and amount. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak to this item? As a reminder, please state your name, ward, or address, and you'll have five minutes to discuss.
Yeah, Gary Eklund. I agreed to purchase a house back in 2014. I'm a longtime, lifelong low-wage worker. My record hours in one week is 96 and 3/4 hours. I also went over 10 years without a single week's vacation. So, you work like hell when you work at minimum wage, or below minimum wage, or just above minimum wage. And when I agreed to buy a house in 2014, I bought a house at $26,500. I believe if I had a regular mortgage or cash, I could have got it at $20,000. The people who bought it made a nice profit. It was a professional business, not a relative or a friend or someone who has cut me some kind of a special deal to be nice. I was taxed originally at 50-some thousand. They reduced it a couple thousand dollars, but they explained to me that they automatically assume that poor people who buy the cheapest houses are getting that, that's a really good deal. Well...
Please state to the, please stick to the agenda item for this.
I, I want to, I want to talk against the property tax as it is. It's just, people in the city of Davenport go homeless because of the property tax rates. Now, wealthy people who make over $100,000 a year, and probably very few government people, go homeless as a result of the property tax rates. But for people who are working at minimum wage, I calculated once, I believe that on top of the, with the taxes that I should have been paying for my house, I believe I was paying $600 a year extra for property taxes.
The agenda item?
I'll, I'll finish. The taxation rates, combined with the sewer and, and the, and the garbage bills, totally murderize and just totally kill poor homeowners, homebuyers, and drive them into homelessness. And something needs to be done to address that. And if I can beg your one sentence further, the city denied me my opportunity to protest my tax this year, and I'm going to be paying, I don't know whether I'm going to be paying $2,000 in extra taxes or what it is, but I'm appealing to them to do some kind of emergency reduction in my personal appraisals, which, which I was denied the opportunity to protest. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this agenda item? Is there anyone from council? Alderman Reiner?
Yes. Isn't this the tax rate that we talked about, where they're going to lower the taxes as opposed to raise them? This is directed towards...
Yes, sir, that is correct. But this item is just to set the public hearing, and then ahead of that public hearing, we will release quite a few documents that better explains this item for the public.
Public should know that we're looking at reducing taxes as opposed to raising taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Seeing no one else, I'll move on to item number two. Resolution awarding a five-year contract for TASER hardware, software, and training to Axon Enterprise Inc. of Scottsdale, Arizona, in the amount of $452,447.92, or 94 cents, using Omni Partners Contract 3544-21-4615. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Item number three, a resolution awarding a three-year contract for the renewal of Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement to incite public sector of Chandler, Arizona, in the amount of $731,259.36, using Omni Partners Contract 23-6692-03. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, I will move on to the final item on the finance agenda. Item four, resolution awarding a contract for the Cork Hill Park Splash Pad Project to Hagerty Earthworks LLC of Muscatine, Iowa, in the amount of $112,840, CIP number ARP10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Newton. I just want to, just, I'm excited about this. This is an ARPA project that, and mostly probably for the kids, Third and Fifth Ward, which this is a part, this park sits between the two wards, will be able to enjoy. They've had a little dribble of water. It's kind of sad, but this won't be sad anymore, and it'll be exciting. So, I'm glad to see this move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? All right. Seeing no one else, I'll note that under purchases of $10,000 to $50,000, there's 11 items on today's agenda. I will now ask Alderwoman Lynch to please set the agenda. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to place items one through four on the consent agenda. I have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I now yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch. Are there, next item, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions that are known for tonight? Send any other reports to city officials. Very good. The next item, will an Alderman please move to go into executive session to evaluate the performance of individuals in closed session as requested by those individuals pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 21.5?
So moved.
Motion is second. Brian, please call the roll to go into executive session. Before you call the roll, I want to let everybody know that the council will adjourn from the meeting after the executive session and will, will not return to council chambers. Brian? Grip?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Reiners?
Yes.
Anne Newton?
Yes.
Anne, yes, as your honor? Very good. We'll go to executive session. I'll ask my council members to quickly, as you can, move up there. Thank you very much.